Welcome all to this special meeting of council. The object of the meeting is to... The special meeting is to review council's policy on expense reimbursement for councillors. And this review is pursuant to financial forecasts considered over recent weeks and of course the need for council to review opportunities for savings moving forward into the next financial year, which of course commences today. Welcome all, as I said. Okay, so the... If I can open the matter that is on the table. Council currently has an expenses reimbursement policy. Or councillors should have a copy of the agenda. And... The policy is as previously provided. And I'm seeking to move a motion that council make... And I will move a motion that council make the following amendments to the policy. And Mr CEO, please guide me if procedurally we need to change our process. This is my first special meeting, but council make the following amendments to the policy. So at item 5.1 of the policy. Under the heading of Meals. So I'll just summarise currently what the policy says in relation to meals. The council will reimburse costs of meals for a councillor when the councillor incurs the cost personally and can produce original documents sufficient to verify the actual meal cost. And the meal was not provided with the registration costs of the approved activity/event or during a funded flight. The current... The following current limits, including GST, are considered to be reasonable for reimbursement by council. Currently, they stand at breakfast $35, lunch $50, and dinner $20. Note, alcoholic beverages will not be reimbursed under this policy. Should the cost for a greater value than those listed above and the cost is deemed reasonable by the CEO, then reimbursement for the full cost may be provided. The motion is that the meal reimbursement amounts... The following amounts are considered to be reasonable for reimbursement by council. Breakfast $17.50, lunch $25, and dinner $50. And that the hospitality section of the policy, again at 5.1, is reworded. Currently, it says that the mayor may claim up to $2,000 per annum for hospitality expenses deemed necessary in the conduct of council business. But it now be written to say that the mayor may claim up to $1,000 per annum for hospitality expenses deemed necessary in the conduct of council business. The remainder of that clause will remain the same. Section 5.2 Facilities Contribution.
Mr Mayor, if you're doing them in sections, did you want to do each section at a time and then we can clear that one out of the way and then move on to the next one?
So do each one as a separate resolution?
Yeah, if we may, yes.
Yeah, absolutely, if that's more practical. Thank you, CEO Mark. So let's deal with the first resolution then, and that is at 5.1. Meals be amended from breakfast from $35 down to $17.50, lunch from $50 down to $25, and dinner from $100 down to $50. I hereby move... Have a second, I thank you, councillor Duff. Right, I'll now open the floor for those who'd like to speak to the matter, speak for or against the resolution, the motion. Thank you, councillor Duff.
Yes, Mr Mayor, I'm keen to see this happen. I know that when this was put through earlier in our... When we first were elected, that there was a lot of pushback from the community. And I get that because we... This figure was double that. And the interesting part about it was that most councillors hadn't... For over the 16 years that I've been elected, we haven't claimed those kind of figures. And most councillors don't even put in receipts for anything. But we were getting, because of the high levels of reimbursement for those dinners, lunches, and breakfasts, it seemed like we were claiming those amounts on a regular basis, which is just totally wrong. So this has got it back to a reasonable amount in any case. But I... Rest assured, councillors probably won't even claim anything for dinners, lunches, and breakfasts in their term in any case. But it's just a perception from the community that we were, yeah, getting way more than we should, when in actuality we weren't even claiming at all. So, yeah, just really keen to see this happen, just to... So that the community understands that the councillors are very conscious of what we're doing, we're listening to the community, we're trying to do a good job for the community, and it's not about us trying to get what we can back in reimbursements. It's just about a perception. So just keen to support this resolution.
Yes, thank you councillor Duff. Councillor Frolov?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd just love to put it on record that these breakfast, lunch, and dinner are not an everyday thing that us council use. This is only when we go away for a conference or a meeting or somewhere that we use these. This is not every day when we're over at Glendon Street Bakery getting breakfast, coffee, and that. This is one off when we're away out of town. So I'd just like to have that noted.
Thank you councillor Frolov. Councillor Shoemaker?
Yes, I'd like to agree with councillor Frolov's comments, and I agree with the changes to the meal allowance and want to ensure it's clearly understood that this allowance will only be reimbursed and claimed in instances where councillors are out of pocket due to council business in capital cities. Where meeting... When meeting with state and federal members or ministers over dinner and alike, it's my understanding that the increases from the previous policy were only recommended as it was identified in the last term for the very few instances that the mayor and all council claimed this expense, that the provision was not enough to travel to Canberra, and that some were left out of pocket. Just because it's in the policy doesn't mean that councillors will claim it. If I'm staying with another councillor employee or councillors for these reasons and council covers the cost of my meal, I want to ensure it's understood in our community that like my council colleagues, any meal or coffee that I consume as part of conducting my daily duties and meeting with people in the region is at my own cost. And I also just wanted to point out that I was very disappointed by the cheap comments made in our community about councillors specifically having their noses in the trough. I, like my colleagues here in this chamber, have worked enormous hours into the night and on weekends since being elected, and I do this because I love my community. This job is more to me than money. I had a corporate career and I walked away with it, from it, because my heart is here in this chamber, in this region, and in my community. And I challenge anybody who makes those comments to come forward and give me a phone call, because that will not be tolerated at all in my term of council.
Thank you councillor Shoemaker. Councillor Henshaw?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Fellow councillors, could I just, for the record as well, state, being a new councillor, in all the study I did leading up to the election in 2019, in all what I read and saw about the previous councillors and this meal allowance, there was nobody, or it was under my impression, nobody abused or used that facility to any extreme whatsoever, which I was pleased to see, and I'm extremely confident this council, whether it be $17.50 or $50 for dinner, breakfast or $100, are certainly not going to abuse that facility. I appreciate that that's been put in and I fully support this, but I agree with councillor Shoemaker, we have certainly not got our snouts in the trough as perceived by some in the public. We're here to do a job and that's what we're here to do. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Henshaw. If I could also add some commentary to this, and I would certainly like to reflect and reinforce what councillor Shoemaker said. It has been sad and disappointing that throughout forms of media, including social media, councillors' claims for meals have been misrepresented. Let me make it very clear that councillors have not given themselves a pay rise. Councillor pay rates are set by the independent local government remuneration commission. This council accepted the commission's pay rates. There has been no pay rise taken by any councillor in this room outside of what is given to us. As such, councillors cannot and have not, please be very clear, given themselves a pay rise. As for meal expenses, I have come to see over recent months that my colleagues often incur meal expenses in conducting their business and rarely submit claims for such. Indeed, myself, I have done a significant amount of travelling over the last two months using my own vehicle, my own car, and I believe I'm the first mayor to do that at my own personal expense, saving council some $27,000 per annum. In addition to that, I pay for all of my own meal expenses and have not submitted any claims. Can we please ensure that that is communicated clearly through this meeting to the community? Does any other councillor wish to speak on the matter of meals? The motion is, Mr CEO, on the screen, that the South Burnett council amends... Sorry, that the following, including GST, are considered to be reasonable for reimbursement by council. Breakfast $17.50, lunch $25, dinner $50, and that the mayor may claim up to $1,000 per annum, previously $2,000, for hospitality expenses deemed necessary in the conduct of council business. Those in favour? Resolution passed unanimously. Thank you all. The second matter is in relation to section 5.2 of the current policy, telecommunications needs and mobile devices. Mobile telecommunications devices owned by council will be provided to the mayor and councillors for official council business. Bring your own device requests will be approved upon application to the CEO on a case-by-case basis. Contribution to councillors' telephone costs. The motion is that council will contribute up to $2,000 per annum to the mayor and each councillor to offset the cost of fixed and mobile telephone costs. This will only be reimbursed on production of appropriate invoices and tax receipts. And for the mayor and councillor supplied with mobile telephones, council will pay the monthly account. We will be deleting the contribution to the mayor's telephone costs. The motion is to delete that, where the mayor has currently a... Council will contribute up to $3,000 per annum to the mayor. The motion is that that clause, contribution to mayor's telephone costs, be deleted and that the mayor will fit in with the $2,000 contribution as for all other councillors. Right, I would move that motion. Do we have a second for such? Thank you councillor Frolov. I'll now open the floor to those who wish to speak for or against the motion. Right, can I just then speak, make it very clear, that councillors are provided with a mobile telephone device by council. This $2,000 per annum covers in the budget the cost of providing that mobile telephone device. Those devices are only able to and are only used for official council business. In 1819 financial year, the telephone costs incurred were as follows. Councillor Campbell, $932. Councillor Frolov, $767. Councillor Jones, $940. Councillor Potter, $767. Councillor Faris Feser, $713. Councillor Duff, $1,558. And councillor Height, $1,005. I share that as an indication of the level of expenditure that has generally been incurred historically in the use of those council mobile phones. So as such, what we are saying here is that council will provide for those mobile phones up to a cost of $2,000 per annum. Please be assured, this is not... There is no private use being reimbursed here. This is for the provision of a mobile phone where councillors use that phone for council business. And that on average, the cost of those mobile phones, as you can see historically, is significantly less than the $2,000 limit. Councillor Shoemaker?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for clarifying that. I just wanted to confirm that I do have a desk here in King Arroy. It's... I share a space under the staircase with councillor Henshaw. We like to think of it as a little bit of our Harry Potter nook. I sit there and there is no telephone connection. So without a council-supplied mobile phone, I have no idea how I'm supposed to take telephone calls from constituents, which I do daily. So I think the amounts are reasonable. I think it's important that we have mobile telecommunications. I think it's important that we can travel across the region, that we can call and talk with constituents and people, officers of council. And I see this as no different to what any other business in the South Burnett supplies their employees as part of conducting their daily business. So thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Shoemaker. Councillor Duff?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to say that I actually had a council phone, I ran over it, and so I decided I felt really guilty about it, and I actually do provide my own phone, so I paid for my own phone, and it's pink as well. So I don't think the council would supply me with a pink one, but I do actually provide my own phone free of charge, but I do get the costs of the actual phone calls. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Duff. So the resolution is that council delete the clause, contribution to mayor's telephone costs. And I will note that in the contribution to councillors' telephone costs, it does say to each councillor excluding the mayor, so we will... We would... Resolution would be to remove the term excluding the mayor as well. CEO Mark?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. It's... The wording is upon the screen. So it'd be just tidying up, amending, amalgamating those clauses and so the mayor falls in with the councillors.
Thank you, Mr CEO. Right, those in favour? Resolution passed unanimously. Thank you all. Right, we'll now move on to further item in 5.2, the policy, vehicle fuel and operation costs. The current policy reads, a weekly amount will be paid to each councillor covering the cost of fuel and wear and tear on the private vehicle of the councillor as follows: division three and four, $100; division one and two, $180; division five, $250. I hereby move... I would hereby put forward the... Move a motion that that clause be amended to read as follows, and I will go slowly here, if you'd like. In general, the most cost-effective form of travel must be used. Full stop. Councillors may have access to a council vehicle from within the fleet for official business where available and as approved by the CEO. Full stop. Councillors may travel using their own private vehicle for business purposes and claim a kilometric allowance substantiated by logbook details. Full stop. The amount to be reimbursed will be based on the ATO's cents per kilometre rate for car travel as published on the ATO website. Full stop. Councillors wishing to claim the kilometric allowance must submit properly completed logbook records in accordance with fortnightly payroll closing dates. Full stop. Late claims will not be accepted. Full stop. Councillors must retain original logbook records for a minimum of five years. Full stop. I hereby move the motion. Do I have a second for such? Thank you councillor Potter. Now open the floor to councillors wishing to speak to the matter. Thank you councillor Duff.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would just like added that I think there needs to be clarification around what is official council duties, and I would like to add if to the recommendation that a report comes back to council as to what is the definition of official council duties, just so we're all clear on what we can and can't claim for.
Procedurally, that would be then written into the policy, so that would be a separate resolution by itself, not part of that substantive one. So once this one is dealt with, by all means, but yeah, otherwise you'd end up with that wording in the policy at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So I'll just, to withdraw that one for a follow-on recommendation. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
But thank you councillor Duff. Any other councillor? Councillor Potter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, we are elected as councillors to represent the whole of the South Burnett regional council area, and our portfolios take us all over the South Burnett area as well. And we often do travel outside of the South Burnett region for particular meetings. So therefore, in accordance with section 12 of the Local Government Act, I do believe this is probably one of the best policies.
Thank you councillor Potter. Councillor Shoemaker?
Yes, I agree with councillor Potter's comments. I think it is my view that councillors are no different to the executives who are paid a considerable travel allowance, or staff who are reimbursed for using their own vehicles for the purposes of engaging in professional development outside the region, or meetings in which they travel long distances. I was grateful for the original provision supplied in the past policy, because it did help me and my family cover these costs. I was of the view that the amounts that we had nominated in the previous policy for my fellow councillors were fair and reasonable based on the vast kilometres they cover across their divisions. I saw this as a cost-effective way to manage the finite resources we have and ensure every councillor receives some compensation for the travels, kilometres they travel. I want to make it known that unlike neighbouring councils, this region's councillors have not asked or expected council to supply a vehicle for their own use every day, and instead have opted to use their own vehicles, which includes purchasing their own fuel and covering the heightened cost of maintenance and servicing due to the number of kilometres they travel. I also thought in my mind, I've always looked to ways to use every opportunity to build relationships with my colleagues and members of the community and enjoy carpooling wherever possible. As my fellow councillors here, we will always look to ways to travel together and limit any costs incurred that each of us as rate payers contribute to. I do agree with councillor Potter. Like you, I am a member, an active member of this community, and as COVID restrictions ease, you will see me more across the region. My intention is to work across from Prostern to Blackbut and everywhere in between, and this is because it's important to me, as your elected representative, that I travel these kilometres and do everything I can to fully understand our residents and rate payers' views, to understand the facts, and continue to engage and consult so that I know in my heart that I can continue to make evidence-based decisions in the best interests of my community and our region's longevity, and ensure its many assets are sustainable. While I see it fair for councillors to claim the mileage rate, I too would like to investigate how we define what constitutes council's business.
Thank you councillor Shoemaker. Councillor Henshaw?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. CEO and fellow councillors, I'd like to reiterate what councillor Potter has said. Also bring it to the people's attention, these logbooks will define exactly what councillors are doing, and we will see. I'm very confident in this council, some great discretion shown at what kilometres will be claimed through those logbooks. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Henshaw. Could I also add some commentary to this? That, as I've said before, as for these travel expenses, I've come to realise that councillors often incur significant travel expenses and don't always claim for such. So thank you councillors, I have seen firsthand the long hours you all put in and the costs you incur from your own pockets for the betterment of our communities. Everyone that I see in this room has the capacity to earn obviously a reasonable income outside of their role of council, be it in business, qualified employment, or wherever that may be. But you choose to be here, and I know that you all choose to be here for the betterment of our community. We need more people like you to put your hands up across our great state to be councillors and to be politicians. It does come at a significant personal cost, and I'd like to acknowledge and recognise that today. I've come to know all people in this chamber as people who are only here because they do indeed genuinely care about the future of our region, and today's resolution further demonstrates such. Could I also make it clear to everyone who is in attendance here today and who is watching this live stream, that I am using my own vehicle? My vehicle is a very aged vehicle, it has very little value. I use that, I incur all the wear and tear costs on my own vehicle, I pay all of my own fuel, all of my own maintenance and repair costs, as I said, on that vehicle. It is significant because it's an aging vehicle. That in itself will save the council $20,000 on what they incurred on a mayor's vehicle last year and in previous years. Could I also make it clear to everybody that this council is one of few councils across Queensland where councillors do not receive a council-funded vehicle? And in some cases, councillors are even in some councils afforded the luxury of taking that vehicle home. None of that luxury is provided to this or taken by the members of this council. In addition to that, I think you would find that I am possibly one of very few mayors in the region, indeed the first mayor in the history of this regional council, to use his own car and pay for all of his own fuel, repairs, and costs. That is simply a reflection of what we all do as councillors for the better of the community. So I congratulate and thank you all for the contribution to you make, that you make to the betterment of this region and to the good people of the South Burnett. Right, does anyone else wish to add anything further? Okay, well, we'll put the motion to the vote. All in favour? Resolution passed unanimously. Thank you all. Mr CEO, is there any further matters that we need to attend to prior to closing? Oh, sorry, councillor Duff, yes?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to move another recommendation, that a report comes back to council as to what is the definition of official council duties. I'd like to move that recommendation.
Do we have a second for such? Thank you councillor Shoemaker. Councillor Duff, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted it clarified, because I think, yeah, we could just go to so many things. As you've mentioned, we just... And I live so far out, I actually rack up quite a significant amount of kilometres, so I just think it needs to be clarified because, so that we understand, you know, what's official council duty and what's, you know, just part of the general day-to-day expectation of a councillor. So I'm just keen to see that clarified, so that we all understand what we shouldn't and shouldn't be claiming for. And as has happened in the past, I'm quite sure that councillors will be very careful in what we do and don't claim for, but I just wanted to... I think it's important in the interest of good governance to actually have that clarified. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Duff. Councillor Shoemaker?
Yes, that's the purpose, reasons why I've seconded this motion. While I see it fair for councillors to claim the mileage rate, the same as any other council staff member would claim when they use their vehicle, my concern is that it's unclear in the policy what constitutes council business and claimable kilometres. my concern is that it's unclear in the policy what constitutes council business and claimable kilometres. And like my colleagues, I'm an active member of the community. I attend a lot of meetings and volunteer my time to support different community groups. I don't believe these kind of things, these kinds of activities that I choose to be part of are necessarily council business. While I gain my views, many views and perspectives and talk about ideas that I may take back to council for consideration, I'm attending as a member of the community, not as a councillor. So I'd like to see a provision in the policy that defines what kilometres constitute council business and are worthy of reinvestment, reimbursement. I'm mindful that at the end of the year, every councillor's claimed expenses are reported to the community in the annual report. And due to the differing kilometres we each travel across some divisions, particularly for five and six, I believe there will be public scrutiny over the kilometres claimed and I see this as an unfair judgment. In my view, this policy should define what are claimable kilometres. And I, I would like to see this included in the provisions of the policy because I believe it's too gray. Um, and like you, I, I will actually not claim any kilometres under this policy without that clear framework for what I can and can't claim.
Thank you councillor Shoemaker. Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to revert back to councillor Potter's comments about, uh, the Local Government Act 12. It states that all councillors have the following responsibilities, ensuring the local government discharges its responsibilities under this act and achieves its corporate plan and complies with all laws that apply to local governments, providing high-quality leadership to the local government and the community, participating in council meetings, policy develop- development and decision-making for the benefit of the local government area and being accountable to the community for the local government's performance. Local Government Act 107. For that purpose, a councillor's role includes attending meetings of the local government or its committees that the councillor is entitled to or asked to attend. Two, meetings for a resident of the local government area. Three, conferences, deputations, inspections and meetings at which the councillor's attendance is permitted by the local government. And four, official functions organised for the local government. Clearly states there what we need to do. And I know in this room that no councillor is going to claim anything that they feel uncomfortable about not being business. Now, if you go down to a local store and, um, someone bails you up, I don't class that as claimable travel because that's just in the community, you're talking to somebody else. But if you claim something you're not entitled to, you do it at your own peril because it's fraud and you'll be locked up. I, anyway, that's, that's all I've got to say on this matter. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you councillor Jones. That's a very pertinent legislative reference there. Right, uh, councillor Shoemaker?
Yes, I agree with councillor Jones's comments and the, I would like to see some guidelines put in the policy that align with, um, the actual core duties of councillors so that it's not misleading in any way.
Thank you councillor Shoemaker. Councillor, uh, if, uh, the councillor wishes to speak for or against the motion? Councillor Duff, uh, we do have the, uh, motion on the screen. Can you perhaps just confirm your motion, please? So that's, yeah, that's the motion. You're comfortable with that?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Yes. But thank you councillor Duff. And that's been seconded by councillor Shoemaker. You're comfortable with that councillor Shoemaker, the wording of such? Right, uh, so, uh, everyone has the motion in front of them. Let a report be prepared and presented to a future council meeting, clarifying what is official council duties for claimable expenses. All in favour? Who's in favour? Of course, there's no, no one against. So, uh, resolution passed unanimously. Uh, thank you councillors. Right, unless there's any further business to attend to on the special meeting, we'll now call the meeting closed.